I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome here, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. And at this time, I'd like to give the opening to Counselor Jake Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Elections 2025. I would like to make some comments about the elections. Comments not from a political point of view, but rather observations and personal thoughts of as an everyday, ordinary person. I think we all had enough of the election since being swamped these last couple of months of news stories, election debates, people at our doors, and general conversations with like-minded people and those of another ilk. I have jotted down some personal thoughts and observations. On the provincial level, we had a leadership race for the Conservative Party of Manitoba. These two candidates, the race was between Abbie Kahn and Wally Dodridge, a race I think most people thought was closer than first expected. I think the actual percentages were forty-nine point five to fifty point four in favor of Mr. Kahn. The question to be answered now is, can Abbie Kahn pull the party together so it is not polarized such as the final count may indicate? Reading the headlines as of late, it appears that Dodridge wishes to remain as a party faithful, helping to unite its members. So my hat goes off to Abbie Kahn for winning and to Wally Kahn for his commitment to the cause. Kahn, upon taking the helm of the party, immediately apologized for the party not doing more to facilitate the landfill project and ultimately recovering the remains of the two murdered Indigenous women. On the federal level, we saw turbulence starting six months ago that culminated on Election Day as a minority government was elected for the Liberals. During the election period, I took the opportunity to do some door-knocking, as did other members as well. I was doing some door-knocking for MP Ed Falk in Provence and for former MP Marty Morance in Winnipeg, representing the riding of Charleswood, St. James, the Sineboine, and Headingly since 2019. The results were that Falk won by a landslide and Morance was narrowly defeated by the Liberals. When door-knocking and the response I received from people confirmed my assumption and beliefs that the Canadian electorate is fickle. This was a conclusion reached in both the urban and the rural areas. Numerous people I spoke to, a couple of days before the election, assured me that they would be doing their due diligence over the weekend in researching both the Conservative and the Liberal parties. Most were concerned that crime was a major election priority, and they were unaware which party would be the toughest on crime. My thoughts and responses were, did we not now just complete ten years of catch and release? The question left unanswered was, where these individuals gravitate to in order to glean and seek their information? From the Internet? From CBC? From friends woven with similar cloth? Of all the people I spoke to, no one said they were supporting the NDP. These past ten years of catch and release have definitely made it more difficult for the police, made more work for prosecutors and judges, and foremost, causing the general public to be less safe and more at risk for property damage and serious violent crime. One lady I spoke to responded that her family had always voted Conservative, but now cast her their early vote for the Liberals. She said she was looking forward to a more comprehensive bail reform and tougher stance on crime. Again, I'm reminded that our past government had ten years to enact such a law and to bring in reform. During all this time, the thought or opinion that I was left with was over the arching attitude of people not committed to policies and positioning of their party, the party they supported and what the party stands for. I'm left concerned that people's convictions are fluid at election time, most often voting against a candidate or a party opposed to voting for someone, thus not weighing the platform or policies of the parties. Many, of course, have a mindset of what it is, that their mindset is, what's in it for me? At the end of the day, I left confused and puzzled, as I encouraged everyone of the importance of getting out to vote and every vote counts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us, looking for motion to adopt. Counselor Susan Penner, seconded by Counselor Hebert. Call for question, all's in favor. Pose that is carried. Counsel, we have the minutes of April fifteenth, 2025, regular council meeting in front of us, starting page one. We've all had a chance to review, looking for motion to approve. Counselor Penner, seconded by Counselor Hebert. Call for the question, all's in favor. Pose that is carried. Counsel, are there any business arising from the minute? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. It's just a little before seven thirty-five, so we'll move to administration. We've got nine A, we got accounts payable. We've all had a chance to review, looking for motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, seconded by Counselor Penner. Call for the question, all's in favor. Pose that is carried. We've got nine B, this is bylaw two-two-six-three. This is referring to the 2025 Realty and Education Tax. This is the levy bylaw, second and third reading. Mr. Worthing, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bylaw two-two-six-three is a bylaw to represent the city's 2025 Realty and Education Tax Levy. The overall municipal mill rate, council has approved for 2025, is fourteen point four mills, which is made up of several different components. And the bylaw would also include the required education taxes that are also levied for both provincial and school division taxes. Recommendation is, council give this bylaw second and third readings.
Okay, counsel, looking for a second reading. Counselor Swexer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion for a second reading.
Seconded by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, of course, is our annual budget. We have the information from the school board, so that way we have a complete budget. We've already given approval in first reading, and so this just simply continues the process in second reading.
Anything further?
Nothing further.
Anything further of counsel? Call for the question, all's in favor of second reading. Pose that is carried. We'll go directly into third reading, counsel. Counselor Penner.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counselor Hebert. Okay, any comments?
No further comments. Nothing further, thank you.
Anything further of counsel? Call for the question, all's in favor of third reading. Pose that is carried. Okay, it is just a little past seven thirty-five, so we'll go directly into the public hearings. Counsel, we've got two public hearings in front of us, they're both for two-eighty-six Henry. We will, I'll have administration introduce them together, but we'll take care of them separately, first the variance, then the rezoning. But this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Worthing, could you please introduce these files?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing for two items. First of all, rezoning bylaw two-two-six-two, and also variance file V dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-seven, as you mentioned, for the property with a civic address of two-eighty-six Henry Street. The owners of the property are Brett Adnam and Jonathan Delvecchio, with the applicant for the bylaw and the variance being Jordan Lawn. Purpose of bylaw two-two-six-two is to rezone the subject property from RLD, residential low-density, to RMD, residential medium-density, to allow for a multifamily development to be constructed. Purpose of variance V dash two-zero-two-five dash zero-seven is twofold. First of all, to allow an overall site width of sixty-four point five feet, whereas minimum site width of seventy-five feet is required in the RMD residential medium-density zone. Secondly, to permit a corner side yard setback of four feet, whereas the RMD zone requires a minimum corner side yard setback of eight feet. Notices, as are required under the Planning Act, have been issued. Other than correspondence from community planning, there is no other correspondence on file, and the comments from community planning indicates that it generally has no concerns with the rezoning application. As far as comments from administration, this existing property does contain a single-family residence. It is located at the corner of Lawn Boulevard and Henry Street. And as far as the proposal itself, the proposed access to the subject property would appear to have an appropriate setback from the intersection, and it would not appear that the requested site width reduction would have a negative impact on the proposed development or on the abutting roadways. The proposed site plan also shows that the project is able to be developed without the approval of the reduced corner side yard from the required eight feet. Therefore, recommendation from administration is that council approve the application to vary the site width to permit a site of sixty-four point five feet, where a minimum of seventy-five feet are required. However, to deny the application to vary the corner side yard setback to permit four feet, where a minimum of eight feet are required, and that that decision be subject to council giving third reading to bylaw two-two-six-two. Further, with respect to the rezoning, the applicant does propose to develop six-unit residential structure on the site. The subject property, as I mentioned, is located at the corner of Lawn Boulevard and Henry Street, and there are no further comments from administration, other than recommendation is that bylaw give, or that council give bylaw two-two-six-two both second and third readings, subject to a development agreement and subject to any evidence that is provided at the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Worthing. So just to clarify to the gallery, the reason why we're taking the variance before the rezoning is because if we take care of the variance first, and if we took the care, sorry, the rezoning first, and we rezone something, we're rezoning something that actually doesn't comply. So we have to bring it into compliance with the variance first. Then if we want to approve the rezoning, then we have something that complies. So that's why we're doing it this way. So is the applicant here for the variance tonight?
Yeah.
Do you wish to speak?
Sure.
Okay. Take the podium, state your name and your address, and then go ahead.
Good evening. Jordan Lawn, triple-four Hespler Street, south in Steinbach. Yeah, most of it was spoken already. I'm going to talk about the variance first?
Yeah.
Is that kind of what we're hoping for? Yeah, the site width, obviously, like you said, we can't do the rezoning without the site width if we're going to talk about the ask for four feet instead of an eight feet on the corner. It just allows the site to function a lot better. The suites get a little larger for the occupants of the building. There's a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. We don't think it interferes with any traffic views to sneak up to that intersection. That's sometimes the reason that there's a larger corner yard setback. But it's not a deal breaker for us, but we would like it just for basically the occupants' sake.
Okay.
That's all I got for the variance.
Any questions of counsel for the applicant? Go ahead, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Administration has indicated to us that the side yard corner setback is abutting Low and Boulevard, and on your site plan, it shows that it's eight feet, which would be in compliance. Why are you requesting the variance down to four feet if?
Fire call. Sorry.
I'm just wondering if you could give more information of if the site plan that you're providing to the city is in compliance of eight feet, why you're requesting a variance to bring it down to four feet?
Right. We brought a compliance site plan. This had administration's approval and recommendation to approve it. We worked with the planners and the engineering team, and this does work without the variance. So if granted the variance, we would widen it a little bit. So I didn't want to bring you something that didn't work.
So just for clarification, if I may follow up, what you're requesting is the four-foot to bring a different plan?
Correct.
That is essentially very similar, but a little bit more width for your units.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah.
Anything further of counsel? Okay, you can take your seat. Is there anyone here with questions, comments, or objections to this variance? Okay, yep, take the podium.
Hello, my name is Carl Mulder. I live at two-eighty-seven Henry Street here in Steinbach. Not so much opposed to what's going to take place on this property. We need housing, that's obvious. But just from our point of view, since the present owners have taken over this property, it has been, it's pretty gross. Like, we got to look at lawn that is sometimes eighteen inches high in the summer, weeds blowing all over the place. My front yard, three years ago, was weed-free. It's not the case anymore. So are the landlords going to be absentee landlords, or are they going to take care that this property is going to be maintained? That's the biggest concern that we have, right? Are we going to see six times the amount of garbage that we already see now? So just a couple things that way. And that's really the only thing, only concern I have.
Okay. Thank you. Well, after, I'll ask the applicant if they can answer that for you. Okay. Is there anyone else here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Now, talking to the applicant, can you shed any light on what would be happening? I mean, I would imagine with the new garbage pickup, the dumpster, there wouldn't be garbage bags lying around, it would be in the dumpster, so that'd be much cleaner that way. But is there, are there any other concerns that the resident has opened up that you would want to answer?
I haven't talked.
You come to the.
We didn't talk about yard care as part of the development plan, but I would imagine if they're trying to get people to live in this, it can't look as shabby as it does now. And that's part of the reason this building needs to come down, is because it's long past its lifespan. So as it's fallen into a state of neglect, yeah. Will this redevelopment help? Yes. I think it's typically on renters to look after their own, you know, yard cutting and snow removal, that stuff. So whether somebody does that or whether they hire someone out, I'm sure it'll be much better taken care of.
Okay. Mr. Mulder, were you okay with that answer?
I was always of the opinion that if you own the property, you're responsible to maintain it. So you can say, well, I'll get my tenant to maintain it, but if the tenant doesn't do it, the onus is still on the owner to look after this property.
Yeah. Do, as the owner, do you want to comment? Because we do have the owners here, too.
Yeah. I'm Brett Adnam, and I'm one of the owners. And I just want to say that, first of all, the house is an eyesore, and a little bit, it has attracted maybe the wrong tenant that hasn't kept it the way it would have liked it. But also, with a new property, we would have somebody cleaning the snow removal and also the yard care. It'd be all hired out. So I think that concern would be done.
Thank you very much for taking care of that. Okay. I'll ask one more time before I close the public hearing. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Siemens.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counselor Hebert. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm making motion to approve, because I think that site needs to be redeveloped. It is time, it's well past its lifespan. I would follow the recommendations of city administration, that we approve the variation to the permitted width of sixty-four and a half feet from the seventy-five that are required, but also we should deny the side yard setback and permit only four feet, like as per the drawing. We don't know, future, we don't know. Will we ever, in fifty years from now, will we widen Low and Boulevard? Low and Boulevard is the width, although that goes by property line, that home would then be four feet closer to, if we ever decide to widen Low and Boulevard. But also, I think it, a lot of the homes along there do have the eight-foot setback, so I think it fits that we leave it that the way it is.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Counselor Siemens has pretty well said it, and I think this would be a great improvement for that site, so I have no problem with that variance.
Anything further, counsel? Anything closing?
I think one other thing that I like about this plan is that the driveway is off of Low and Boulevard, not off of Henry. Off of Henry, that's too close to that corner, but there are already driveways in that vicinity with the City of Steinbach driveway, and also there's a multifamily close by as well. But for that traffic to drive in and drive out off of Low and instead of Henry on the corner, I think that was more problematic than having it where it is now. So I like this design of where they access the property as well.
Thank you, Counselor Siemens. I concur. I think that's a much better way of accessing the property, plus it keeps all the business, the parking lot, everything behind the house or the apartment, and then the frontal street will look much nicer as well. Yes, I do support this, too. I think it's a great way to renaissance the new, the area and rejuvenate it, and I think multifamily in this area works well. Call for the question, all's in favor. Oppose, that is carried. Okay, we will go into the rezoning, the bylaw twenty-two-sixty-two, two-eighty-six Henry Street. At this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing, and is the, okay, the applicant is here, do you want, do you wish to speak to the rezoning? Okay.
Probably only be able to talk my way out of this now, but I was just going to mention, and it's nice that there's a map there, that there's already several RMD lots in the general area. We've door-knocked and tried to contact some owner-occupied houses. It's a little tricky in this area. The first six lots across the street on Henry are all tenant-occupied. I do have a letter from one of them approving the owner of the property, approving or recommending that you do approve it. That's two-ninety-one Henry. And then the first owner-occupied house, I believe, it's tough to tell exactly, but is the corner one, the seventh one down across from the hospital. I have a letter from them, the Steves, recommending to approve as well. Our backyard neighbor is the City of Steinbach at the newly upgraded lift station. Behind that is RMD, and then the two on Hospital, same owner, I have a letter from them as well recommending that it is approved across the street. SBC is doing a massive redevelopment, which is great, there'll be a bunch of dorms there. I understand, talking to one of the board members, that you are not allowed to have your spouse in the dorm or your kids, if you are already married and have kids. So having a really close option for families that are coming to SBC, which does occur, will be a nice feature as well. So, yeah, I think it meets all the city policy on multifamily infill development. We take a little bit more traffic off of Henry, which is very nice, that's a very congested street, and gets rid of the eyesore, so.
Thank you very much. Anything for, any questions for the applicant, counsel? Okay, I see none, thank you. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I'll ask again, is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this I'll ask one last time. Anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, at this time, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Hebert, seconded by Counselor.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Counselor Swexer. Okay, go ahead.
I appreciate the presentation made here. The area in question is, as has been indicated, there's a number of RMD housing lots in that area now. Low and Boulevard is a major street, as is Henry, not to quite the same extent, and I think a building of this nature would fit well into this area. So as indicated, there are a number of lots that are RMD now, and this is just a continuation of that transition zone.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As noted, this is a corner lot on a major street, and there's already medium density in the area. It looks like a good plan, and I think that it'll be an improvement to the area, so I So I am happy to second it.
Anything further of council? Anything closing?
Nothing, thank you.
Council, I too think it'll, it fits well into this area, especially with what's happening in the area at this time. There's a fair bit of redeveloping that's going on. So I will definitely approve as well. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, council, we have 7A. We have delegations. This is Eastman Raiders.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Recommendation is also to give this bylaw a third reading.
Third reading as well, okay. We'll go directly into third reading. Most to approve?
Most approve.
Second by Councilor Hebert, go ahead, Councilor.
Nothing further.
Nothing further.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay. Okay, now we go to delegations, Eastman Raiders. This is referring to Floodlight Campaign Funding Request for 2026. Just for the minutes, I'll help you state your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Bergen, number two George Place here in Steinbeck. So we're here this evening to give you some information about the Floodlight Campaign. We would like to get rolling at 80 Penner Park here in Steinbeck. So, who are we? Raiders have been around for a long time. It's a pretty well-known name in this community. We even have some professionals have come out of the league. So we were founded in 1996, and we have a rich history and a proven track record of excellence. Some of you may know that our oldest group of players last year had a perfect season. So what we do, we empower local youth and children from age 14 to 18 by providing them with the opportunity to play football, fostering physical activity, teamwork, and a sense of community. Each year, we see approximately 150 players participating in our league. And this season, or I should say this offseason, we have also begun to offer flag football clinics to local schools. And that seems to be gaining some traction as well. So why Floodlights? Growing numbers at our club are creating scheduling challenges. Installing lights would ease the scheduling pressures for both the MMFA, so that's the regulating body, Eastman Raiders, and the SRSS Sabres. So Floodlights would allow us to maintain our competitive edge. So currently, practices are cut short due to reduced daylight hours going into the fall. This would allow us to extend our practice hours, improve visibility and safety. Floodlights are standard in the youth sports, helping players balance school and personal commitments. So this is our current situation. And again, as we get further into fall, towards the end of our season, it gets dark quite early. And so these are some of the stopgaps that we've put into place from time to time. Really, just not enough. So how does it benefit the community? Well, this would be a significant infrastructure investment and improvement for 80 Penner Park. During game weekends, we see approximately 400 to 500 visitors coming from all over Manitoba, really, to come and compete. Those visitors inevitably support local businesses and support our local economy. So for example, our U-18 team competes in a league that includes teams from Dauphin, Mussumin, Niipawa, and other areas across Manitoba. And this brings additional business to local hotels and restaurants. So this is, I guess, an overview of what the plan would look like. Total of 56 lights. And as you can see, so that is the, that is the football field at 80 Penner Park. And I don't have much else to say about that. So, project costs. We've engaged with manufacturers, local installers. And so what we're looking at at this point is total estimate right now of about $212,000. Materials will be about $75,000, so that'd be the lights themselves, light poles, another Labor, right around $60,000, $62,000, and a contingency of roughly 5%, which equals $10,000. So not included in these numbers would be the cost from Manitoba Hydro for a new transformer and meter installation. Our proposed cost breakdown, right now, would see Eastman Raiders covering approximately $141,000 of the project, and we would be looking to the City of Steinbeck to provide approximately $70,000 of the project cost. That's all I have presentation-wise. If there's any questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation and for doing all the groundwork and getting the estimates and, you know, just the whole working mechanics of the lights, how it will work. Are there any questions of council? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation and for the work that you do. I mean, we certainly do appreciate the Eastman Raiders. I do have a question, just in terms of the cost breakdown. As you know, prices sometimes change. And so you're asking for the city to contribute approximately a third of the cost, the $71,000. Is it the understanding that if the city were to approve the $71,000, that if there's a change in the cost, if it ends up being higher, that there wouldn't be an ask for more from the city, that you've got a contingency that you're planning that you would be covering that? So you're asking for a specific amount? Is there any possibility of that amount that you're asking for changing?
Gavin, if, yeah, if you don't mind, we'll get Gavin.
Just for our budgeting purposes as well, because.
I'm Gavin Don, President of the Eastman Raiders. So currently in that estimate, we've got a, the labor installation costs are fixed. There's going to be no variance to those. The company that we've approached, they are attached to the Raiders, former player, and so they want to work with us and, you know, give us a good deal on this. The lights obviously may be affected by a cost. The lights that we are currently proposing are made in Canada. So, you know, there's no cross-border taxes, tariffs on that. So, other than an increase, slight increase in manufacturing costs, I would think that they're going to be pretty much nailed in for this year, possibly next year as well if we can get that purchase order in. The poles itself that put up the lights, we're working again with a local supplier of those, and they're keen to help us out there. So I think we can pretty much twist their arm and say, yeah, these are fixed prices, and we're not going to vary from those. And we do have that $10,000 contingency in there, just to cover off any cost increases that we might incur.
Okay, so you're relatively confident that with, within the 5% contingency, things will probably more or less stay the same on this?
Yeah, yeah. Like you said, like Matt said in the presentation, at the moment, the only unknown is Manitoba Hydro. And they are reluctant to give any kind of estimate or fees until they actually get a purchase order to actually come and do the work.
Yeah, because the challenge is, once we do set budget, our budget is fixed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that is a good question. Is there, go ahead, council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question, I didn't hear you mention any of the rugby teams that are playing there. Is there a reason for, or what rugby team will be using the same field?
The rugby team currently don't use the same field. They use a field further, like my bearing's now, further north in the park.
Okay, I thought I'd seen them on the same field, but, okay.
No, the only teams that play on there are us and the Sabres currently.
But the lights had probably want to join in, would they?
They could possibly. The only kind of restrictions there, I suppose, would be the field dimensions. They're different for rugby than they are for football. And, you know, I guess things could change, but at the moment, the field is marked for football.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any grants available through Sport Manitoba or anything like that? Have you looked into that?
We have looked into that, and, yeah, we are planning on applying for any grants that are available for infrastructure upgrades to the club.
Okay.
Yep.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Have you had the opportunity to talk to Russ Thicke, and has he given any indication of any concerns or any feedback?
No, we spoke with Russ, and he was very supportive of the plan and the idea, which led us to here.
Well, that's the next step, right?
Yeah.
Anything further, any questions? Okay, Troy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, if I may. Would you have an estimate for operating and maintenance costs of the lights annually?
We do. I'm being told we do.
We do. You were just going off the baseball day in the diamonds, and I believe it was between $120 to $200 a month. Yeah, and so we're using them. When are we using them?
We would use the lights probably from mid-September through till the end of October. And I think the other thing that we can consider here as well is that the light fixtures that we are currently looking at are LED light fixtures. So they will use significantly less electricity. And in conversations with the manufacturers, suppliers of these lights, they don't necessarily require maintenance. If the light stops working, then it's a complete replacement of the light, so you're not replacing bits and pieces and trying to stretch these things out for another 10 years. It's just a complete replacement of the light, and then you're back to operation again.
Okay. Anything further, council? Well, again, thank you very much. Thank you for doing your homework and having all these numbers for us, that's very good. And I think what we'll do is, we will refer this to our study session for July. That's where we build our budget for 2026. And then it'll be finalized in November. That's usually what happens. So this is for 2026 anyway, so it'll be in the next budget year.
Yeah, we see this as a, as a project that's not going to happen in one year. We're kind of restrictive, you know, we've got to drill down for foundations. We've got to run the cable underground, that'll be done by directional drilling. But we've got to wait for the frost to come out of the ground before we can do any of that. What we don't want to do is have open excavations in this beginning of June, mid-June into July, and then into our season, because we don't want kids falling down halls. So the, the way we would probably plan this is to put the foundations in in one year, and then the foundations and the cabling infrastructure in one year, and then bring in the poles. Well, the poles can come in anytime, even after our season's finished, or in the offseason for the beginning of the next year. So it would be a staged, a staged installation. But essentially, yes, it would be the 2026 budget.
Okay, I'll just, I just have to get consensus of council. Council, is there consensus to bring this forward to the July study session?
Yes, please.
Okay, that's when we do our budget talks, and that's when we'll be discussing this. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could I just make a comment?
Yes.
I'm sorry, so the.
Go to the podium, please, yeah.
I'm Naomi Murray. I do not live in Steinback, I'm from Grantham. I was just going to make note that the quotes that we got are set for 365 days. So there shouldn't be a huge variance in the equipment costs. That was it.
Thank you, that's good information, too. Thank you. Okay. Okay, then, council, we'll bring in this forward to study session, and then we'll discuss it at that point, and then see where this, see how the budget works out. Okay? Thank you. Okay, council, we got 7B. We have Urban Systems Limited here to go over our active transportation plan.
Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. My name is Jamie Hilland. I'm a sustainable transportation planner with Urban Systems in Winnipeg. I will preface this all by acknowledging that our project lead on this one, Greg Propp, who is a Steinback resident, just had a baby, so he sends his regrets, that's why we're here instead, but Aaron and I are representing him instead. And we're part of this project the whole time, so we're happy to present and answer any questions that you might have. Yeah, so we'll jump right into it. And so we're here to present this plan. We've been working on it for a while, and we'll get into the logistics of this all. There's the team right there, as you know, Greg is away, and Aaron and myself. And so we've been part of this project over the last year, Lacy, when did we start, last spring, I think?
Yeah.
On it all. So we've been really enjoyed working with the team here as well. I would also make that, do that comment off the hop. And I'll let, so the plan overview, this is basically the active transportation plan will provide the City of Steinback with a long-term vision for active transportation. So active transportation is human-powered, sustainable transportation. So people walking, biking, rolling, scooting, micro mobility is increasingly in that realm as well. And we're seeing a lot more folks getting into e-bikes as well and extending the range. So that's some of the modes that we're going to be including and considering in this plan. So this is built on best practices, and it identifies really a lot of policies and just various initiatives, and encourages active transportation to increase the comfort and safety for active transportation in the community. It proposes an active transportation network that we're going to walk you through all the components of. You folks, I think, have seen a lot of this. We did a council session last fall, does that sound familiar? Yeah, with you folks, and so you would, a lot of this, you would have seen already. So this will be reflecting back what we've heard. And this network plan identifies the infrastructure projects, the implementation priorities, and cost estimates to prioritize implementation and allow you folks to plan accordingly with your capital budgets. Includes sidewalks, crossing improvements, on-street bicycle routes, and multi-use pathways. The objectives are basically to encourage people to walk, bike, or use other modes of active transportation facilities, and facilitate comfortable movement and safe movement throughout the City of Steinback. A lot of the reason why, there were some of the impetus, and we talked about this previously, there's financial, economic reasons from, we work with a lot of local governments across the country. A lot of them are releasing active transportation as a way to save on some of those transportation costs, the road wear and tear, et cetera. And also from a road safety perspective, it's separating road use out by user type and vehicle speeds and user speeds is a key component of any road safety strategy they're trying to implement. This plan also seeks to develop key network priorities to help guide development and investment over the short, medium, and long term, and so we've broken that down in the plan itself. I'll let Mr. Snyder work us through this.
Good evening. I'll do a quick summary of the process we followed while we were developing the plan. So we began by reviewing existing conditions. That involved collecting background information, conducting an inventory of existing active transportation infrastructure in Steinback already, facilities and programs. And then we also conducted a community tour and visit. From there, we moved on to identifying gaps and needs. So this involved a community engagement, which we'll discuss shortly, as well as conducting an AT network gap and opportunity assessment. And then lastly, we drafted the plan. So we took the combination of existing conditions and the gaps and needs assessment to develop preliminary AT network with a series of components. We took that to additional community engagement to get some additional feedback. And from there, we were able to refine the plan, perform some high-level cost estimates, and then finalize the plan that we are sharing with you tonight. And we did all of this very closely, working with city staff. So we'll just quickly highlight the engagement process we followed, and we had also previously discussed this as well. So we had a pop-up engagement last summer at Summer in the City, and then we also conducted an online survey and interactive mapping exercise, as well as some stakeholder meetings. This is just an example of some of the interactive mapping feedback that we received. So it was location-specific, and people were able to provide their thoughts and feedback on the proposed network, as well as just identifying gaps that they had identified in their, in their experience living in Steinback. For the second round of engagement, we conducted a second open house. This one was joint with the OCP Open House. This is in January. There was an additional online survey, and then we took all that additional feedback about the proposed AT network segments. And I'll let Jamie run through that network with you now. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm wearing my glasses now. The screens are a little farther than I anticipated, so hence the change. So the proposed network plan includes a mix of multi-use paths, and these are commons that we'll see in a lot of smaller communities in Manitoba. Very popular, it's mixed mode, just as it sounds, so it allows people to walk, bicycle on them. They're lower-cost initiatives typically than if you're building separated facilities for sidewalks and for cycling facilities. And just very comfortable. Really, what we're trying to do with a lot of the facilities is make it so that people feel comfortable using them and they don't feel that their safety is inherently at risk. And so multi-use paths typically strike that right core, because they are off-streets and allow people to ride of all ages. You can ride with children on those corridors. Older folks can ride on them, too, and they are nice, popular facilities, as we talked about. For this plan here, we really tried to focus on connecting residential areas to some of the commercial areas, the commercial quarter. People want to, you know, access the facilities and don't always want to reach for their car keys or don't have the money necessarily. It builds off the popularity and success of the existing pathway network, which Steinback admittedly does have a great existing network, and so we really wanted to build on the success of that and, you know, and add additional quarters. Close gaps in the network. A lot of folks talked about stories of riding particular pathways and then getting to an intersection or a street and not having anywhere to go. So that was part of what we were at least striving to do here. Wanted to also limit the impact to access private property in high-traffic streets. We recognize that private property, as you talked about tonight, during rezoning, sometimes it's problematic and cumbersome to get through those processes. So we tried to strike a balance with corridors that would really be a little more successful. We also wanted to update the shared street network to better connect to the broader active transportation network. The City of Steinback does have some shared streets existing, and so we proposed some new ones as well, as you'll see, and utilizing and identifying some of the streets that are best suited for that shared use. And so the network plan includes multi-use paths, shared streets, and sidewalks. So we'll run through them one by one. I'll try and go through them at a good clip. If you have questions, feel free to raise your hand. So this one, the first one is, and this is not particular sequencing, but this first one is on Lund Road, Acres Drive, Industrial Road, and Road Park West. And you can see that's up in the northwest quadrant of the city. We're recommending a multi-use path, and because it also connects to the Crispin Mall, Soccer Park, and future residential development that's slated for that area. I just want to caveat that for these plans, these are all recommendations, and just based upon what we've heard and our technical expertise with our transportation engineers, of facilities that we think would serve to advance and get more people riding and walking in the community. It's not prescriptive, it's adaptable, this is living document. These are all recommendations based upon what the public has indicated to us, our technical review, and then conversations with city staff. This one is identified as a medium-term implementation and has a cost estimate of around 2.2 to 3.4, and that's in $20,000. So just to give you the caveat of that. So there we go, zooms in, gives you exactly where those corridors are and some of the alignments. And the alignments can change over time depending on the surrounding topography, elevation changes, drainage, future weather events, future plan development, et cetera. But that's generally where we would want to locate it. This is the southwest Janet Channel, and this was indicated kind of early on as being an opportunity, I think, both by city staff, stakeholders, and some of the public, members of the public. It would connect to the path to the northwest, that's already pre-existing, as you can see, and kind of complete, really, a lot of this network is going to build sort of a great pathway network around the periphery of the city and continue that to the south. There are some key crossings that you can see that we have flagged on there as well, some intersection and crossing improvements that would be required, particularly on PTH12 along the south side there and the McKenzie Avenue to the west. We have talked with MTI about several of these corridors, and they are amenable to looking at improvements for them and to make it safer for crossing. I'm not saying that process is not without issue, but they're definitely aware of and initially supportive of that process. So this is identified as a long-term project for the implementation, and the cost estimate is around $1 million to $1.5 million. and the cost estimate is around 1 million to 1.5 million. This one is the northeast drainage channel, again, making use of existing right-of-way that the city owns and operates, doesn't presently operate, but does have jurisdiction over. It would be a multi-use path would connect to Deerfield Pass, Stone Bridge Crossing, Old Tom Road, and Ramsgate, and you can see those parallel corridors there. We see that as being sort of a long-term cost or, sorry, a long-term implementation. And the cost estimate being between 2 and 3 million dollars. Next, we move on to Hessler Street. And again, this one is a long-term project that we see coming out. City being a multi-use path, there is a room in the existing right-of-way for a multi-use path based upon our analysis. We see this one coming in at about 1.5 million dollars in 2025 as well. But this one is a really key connection to the downtown and connecting the east side of the city, just to that downtown section there. Next up, we have Chrysler Gate and Hessler Street South. And this one is, again, is a major east-west connection through some of the newer areas of Steinbach, as you can see on the south side. We see this one, again, as a long-term project as well in terms of phasing and costing anywhere between 1 and 1.6 million, depending on facility type and alignment. Next, we have the Elmdale Extension, and this one, again, is kind of working towards kind of thinking some of those peripheral recreational pathways on the outside of the city with the downtown core. This one would be a multi-use path connecting Elmdale, Hessler, and Croker. And again, we see this one as being a long-term. It's a shorter corridor, so the cost estimate for this one is a little bit less, anywhere between 400 and 600 thousand dollars. Then we talk about the proposed sidewalk network. And so this one came up a lot, well, from folks, again, just wanting to be able to walk from their homes to walk to the corner or walk down the street with their kids, et cetera. So we've identified a few segments here. We are recommending 1.8-meter concrete sidewalks. That's typical design standard now that we're going with. And there's about 15-meter to 2-kilometer-long segments, as you can see. Key connections are throughout. As you can see, it's a lot of different segments there. We see this being a medium-term project to implement, and the cost estimate's anywhere from 7, depending on how many you want to implement at a time. Sidewalks can be fairly inexpensive, depending on the length, et cetera, from 7,000 to 1 million for full implementation of that. Next up, we have a shared street. This is on Reimer, Fourth, and Lumber. And you can see, again, really trying to make it so that we're connecting some of those recreational pathways to the west there with the downtown core so that people can access a lot of those commercial services from the residential areas. So that would connect to Main Street, Stonyburg Middle School, Elien-Bargman Park, and the Southeast Event Center. We see this one as being a higher priority, for sure. It's kind of an easy, quick win. It does a lower cost estimate, coming in at just under 10,000 dollars, basically requiring some signage and some traffic markings for this one. Next up, we have the Stone Bridge Home in Elm. And again, this is a shared streets facility. Key connections, again, are Elmdale, Bethesda Regional Health Center, PTH 12, and Old Tom Road. Again, we see this one as being a higher priority just because it is a quick win, quick build, fairly inexpensive cost estimate in 2025 is 12.1, 1,000 dollars. So much less. And then we have South Park Drive as a shared street again. It's a key connections are Chrysler Gate, multi-use path, so kind of building out that network a little bit. The southwest drainage channel on the south side of it there, and then Steinbach Regional Secondary School, which is obviously a major trip. We call them trip-journey facilities is the fun one, but basically it's a facility that people come and go, and a high school is going to be just that. We see that one as being a higher priority. And again, the cost estimates on that one would come in only at 5.4 thousand dollars. So not super cost prohibitive. Next, we have Biscayne, Croker, and Evergreen. This one, again, a shared streets, and we see this one as being a short-term, again, quick win, quick build, only 25.6 thousand. It's a longer corridor, so a little bit up there. But it does connect that that multi-use plan, multi-use path on Chrysler Gate and as well as the one on Hessler, the Elmdale Extension as well. And then there's two schools that are along this corridor. So we really want to see that being as a safe place for people to walk and bike as much as they can. So here's some of the cost estimates. We've lumped them into some tables for just multi-use path facilities alone. Gives you sort of a summary of that one. We do want to caveat that the Chrysler Gate-Hessler one does not include urbanizing of the right-of-way, so that's no street-scaping elements, no benches, no lighting, et cetera. That's just for the facility itself. And then we've given two cost estimates as well, recognizing that you might want to do a limestone, which is less expensive, or an asphalt as well in the future. They both have pros and cons in terms of usability and user surfaces and user preferences. But we want to give you folks just some options in terms of pricing for that one. And then cost estimates for sidewalks. As you can see, you know, not overly extensive in terms of length. I think the longest one is Long PTH 12. There you can see it was almost 2 kilometers. The other ones are shorter lengths, about 400, 300 meters. Really trying to close the gap, the existing gap that people identified to us as being problematic for when they just want to walk around their neighborhood and enabling folks to kind of walk around and check with their community and connect with their neighbors a little bit. And lastly, the cost estimates for shared streets. Again, quite inexpensive, typically for facility. Signage and pavement markings is typically the the major costs that you're going to see on these types of projects. And then the last one, you can notice with the Biscayne-Croker Evergreen is that the crosswalk at Mackenzie Avenue did bring the costs up a little bit on that one, but that is something we would strongly recommend as well. So that's it. Hopefully, that wasn't too, too fast for folks, and you had a chance to digest it. Happy to answer questions that you may have. And unless Lacy wants to add anything or Troy, no? Okay. Perfect.
Okay, well, thank you. I I do really appreciate the work you've done and how you've identified needs in the community. And I also, I can appreciate how you've said they tie into budget, like how the budget works. Like, there might be years we can do more, there might be years we can't do very much.
Yep.
But this is, the nice thing is, it you've given us priorities. We can look at them, and we can say, yeah, that's that can be a priority for us, too. And and no, I think this is a good, this is a good start. We've never had anything like this before, and now we have to start somewhere. And this is a great start. And I'm looking forward to continue to unwrap it and see how that's going to work in our community.
Great. The one thing, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't add to is that the National Active Transportation Fund will be renewed in future years. And that is a 60% matching fund of up to 5 million dollars. So you can access that one for capital funding stream. The capital stream just closed last year. They're doing a new planning stream, but it does have a rolling intake typically for once every every year. And then Federation of Community Municipalities also does some matching funding for projects of these types. So there is some external funding available as well.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Yep.
I can definitely help with getting some projects done. Okay. Counsel, any questions at this point? Okay. Then we'll continue.
Great. Thanks.
Do you want a motion? Do you want a motion to accept the plan?
Okay, I guess we've come to the end, so we will. Mr. Ordin, are we looking for a motion to accept or?
Yes, if counsel is is prepared to accept the report, it is it is presented as, as Mr. Hillen mentioned, as a as a fluid tool for city council and staff to to use as a guide. If counsel is is wishing to do so, then I would suggest or recommend that a motion to adopt or to to accept would be appropriate.
Okay, counsel looking for motion to accept. Counselor Siemens?
Motion to accept.
Second by Counselor Penner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of comments. First off, as you said, this is the first time that we've hired a consultant to develop any kind of a plan, active transportation plan for the city. So this is a great starting point. It's not the finishing point. It's the starting point of where we're at, and it's a good stock and inventory of where our transportation plan is at. So I've appreciated the the work that's gone into it and a lot of the recommendations that go around it. And the history provided in this report has also been very good. And things that we have accomplished to date, we do have some great pathways. And if you spend any time at all on our pathways in Steinbach, whether it's Bush Farm or the path to the the pool or the Clear Spring Greens or through the soccer park on Elien-Bargman Park, we do have a good pathway system that started. And now with the new development at Langhill Farms, now the developers are starting to understand that that how important pathways of transportation is, too. But this is also a little bit bigger than that. How do we move people outside of a vehicle? Our planning has always been in our community, like many communities, is how do we move the vehicles? It's not how do we move people outside of vehicles? So this is a good plan, and it also hinders some of the planning in our downtown core because our our streets are set and. But I've appreciated the information. I appreciate the information. There was a little bit of information on street calming. I appreciated that. I would have liked to seen more on that. I also appreciated the Share the Road program that you've moved it off of Lownd Boulevard and into other side streets, more of the residential streets. So that makes perfect sense. So that is something that I could see us doing, and that is a low-cost improvement. And I appreciate that recommendations. It's ongoing. It's our older parts of the city. At our our core, that's always a struggle, but where we would have to, that's where the Share the Road program is is a big piece of. I also see where we need to push more pedestrian traffic to our shopping centers. So we, the recommendation is a is a sidewalk or a multi-use path on the west side or on the west side of number 12, which is important. Today, we cannot get to Superstore by walking or by bike without crossing private property or sharing the road, the very tight road with with vehicle traffic. So I think that is critical. Looping pathways is also important, that this would help with that. One of the problems I have or one of the issues I see, and it was mentioned, is how do we cross across some of our major streets and highways? But those are all choices that we'll have to make when we get to that point with the recommendations. There's a lot of information to absorb here, and I've missed a few items listed. As I've read through it a number of times, and then now we hear presentation, there's new things that have come up. But this is a great first step in developing and being part of our long-term strategy. The pathway system developed by Langhill Farms Development is a great example. How incorporating active transportation into our developments will serve our residents well into the future. So future developments, then I would expect them to to see that as well. But once accepted, this plan will be part of future planning. And as stated earlier, it's a good first step in developing a long-term strategy regarding our active transportation.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will try not to echo the sentiments of Counselor Siemens, although we covered a lot there. This is this is a great beginning beginning step. And city of Steinbach doesn't have, didn't have an active transportation, at least not a formal active transportation adopted, which often less us as counsel scratching our heads and saying, well, could we connect this? Could we connect that? And the reality is, we're not the professionals, and that's why we brought the consultants on board because they came up with ideas that we didn't even think were necessarily on the table. One thing I do really appreciate is the look for the the vision for the future. A lot of these projects are long-term, but they're long-term with purpose. If you look at the further, at the bigger map, you can see that there's kind of tendrils of active transportation that go into every area of Steinbach potentially in the future. And what that does is that gives a city the opportunity to, as development occurs on the peripheral areas, to get to get areas set aside already for active transportation. Another thing I really appreciate is that the future, the future proposed paths are mostly off-road paths. We unfortunately, there's only so much you can do with aged infrastructure. So in part of this plan, there is some shared pathway with regards to on the street. But ideally, as is reflected in the long-term plan here, it is to have multi-use paths that are off of streets. It's safer for pedestrians. It's better for for automotive transportation as well. So it's a good plan. A lot of this probably won't even be enacted by anybody that's on this council right now. But it's a good planning, a good long-term plan and some short-term solutions as well. So a good mix of everything to look at at future active transportation.
Thank you. Any further? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will support the motion as well. I think it's helpful to have a document that gives us a big-picture look at active transportation within the city, and that's certainly what this does for it. I look at this as a as a general, you could think of it as a general plan that in principle, these are some of the things that we will look at and consider in the future. I certainly do like the idea of having more pathways. And this has identified, you know, some possibilities. The price tags are very high, and so no one should look at this and assume that, okay, all of this is going to happen in the near term. As the document itself says, much of this is is significantly in the future. When you add this all together, I think it added up to 11 million dollars in total. That won't be happening anytime soon. But as far as doing some of the things in here, especially some of the shared, share the road, some of that additional signage, that certainly is reasonable, and that can be done in the in the shorter term. One thing that's important to me is to make sure that any planning that we do with active transportation does not hinder or get in the way of vehicle transportation. People do drive cars, and I have no intention of preventing people from doing that or telling people they shouldn't be driving their cars. We want to obviously facilitate for anyone who wants to walk and ride a bicycle. That is great. The reality is that most people in Steinbach do drive vehicles, particularly in the winter months, and we're not going to do anything to impede that. Also, in terms of some of the details in here, not everything in here is something that I am looking at wanting to do. I think it's, for example, you know, when you look at the sidewalk section, some of the sidewalks that are listed here that are proposed are on streets that are very well-established. And that what we found in the past is that when you start trying to put sidewalks into very established neighborhoods, you tend to get a lot of neighborhood opposition because of the impact it has on driveways, trees, shrubs, and that. Back in 2007, for example, because Madison Drive is one of the ones that's mentioned here as a proposed sidewalk, the city had planned to put a sidewalk along there, and there was overwhelming opposition on Madison Drive, and we removed it. That was one of the very first things that happened when, after Counselor Siemens and I were elected to council, was we dealt with massive neighborhood opposition there. And so it's important to keep that in mind as well. But again, this plan is not saying that we're going to do all of this. It's saying, here is a big-picture look, and here are some of the things that we can do in the future. And I think the document is helpful, so I certainly am in favor of accepting it and and using it in our future planning process.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel? Anything closing?
Just echo Counselor Swaggs' rather. I do remember Madison Drive, and I do remember the feedback. And and we were, counsel was determined to put a sidewalk down Madison until we arrived at the doors and knocked on doors and and had a negotiation in the middle of the street, it seemed. But I appreciate that. But again, I agree with your comments that this is a plan in principle, and it is important.
Well, counsel, it's kind of really neat that this this Saturday at the Pick 'Em and Walk, a small group of youth cornered me, and they wanted to talk about exactly this. They want to talk about pathways. They want to talk about more share the road. They wanted to talk, actually, they even said that we should do something with parking times because there's often a lot of cars parked on share the road, roads, roads that are shared the road. And I said, well, if we would, if we'd extend that and we'd add more share the roads, possibly you could be on a road that would be less traveled, and you would be, you would be able to navigate without going around parked cars. But one of the, one of their requests was that we would have pathways that would link neighborhoods that would not necessarily be on roads. And that's where this is. You know, counsel, we've tried our, we've tried our best. On the 15 years I've been on council, I've, we've approved many sidewalk plans, many pathway plans, and I think we've done a good job without having a plan. What I, what I think this is good about this is we will have a plan. They'll be targeted. Not that we're going to do everything every year, but we're going to do some things every year. And and we're going to have a targeted plan so that after a certain amount of time, we will have this done, and then we'll need a new plan. And I think, I think that's what's exciting is that now we have something to work on. Little by little, we'll whittle away at it, and we'll get it done. And we will enhance our neighborhoods, and we will, we will enhance our family times with, inside of families, to be able to do, because not everyone wants to ride bikes. Some like to longboard, and some like to scooter. And we see that all the time on our pathways that are close to our house. And so for that reason, I'm actually very glad to see this. And I think this is a step in the right direction. Again, it was said before, this is a first step. And and but this is, I do believe this is better than what we've been doing. And and I mean, the last, I think, one of the last regional pathways we did was was when we had a neighborhood, a community came to us and and asked, asked for a delegation and asked for a path, and then we worked on it. That worked in that situation. But in this situation, I think it's going to work way better to be proactive instead of reactive. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, we've got, we'll go back to 9C. Bylaw 2264. This is referring to the 2025 business tax levy and bylaw. This is, we're going to do second and third reading today. This is, we're going to do second and third reading today. Mr. Workney, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, bylaw 2264 is the city's 2025 Business Tax Levy bylaw. The business taxes are set at a rate of 0.5% on business accessible property for 2025. Recommendation is for council to give this bylaw second and third readings.
Okay, counsel, we're looking for a motion for second reading. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Swagster. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As indicated, this is the Business Tax Levy. It authorizes the city to collect business taxes for 2025. And this tax applies to businesses only. And as indicated, the rate is set at points, at 0.50%. So yeah, all it does is authorize the city to collect those taxes. Thank you.
Anything further?
I can't add anything to that. That covered it.
Anything further, counsel? Anything closing?
Well, thank you.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Looking for third reading. Motion to approve. Second by Counselor Hebert. Go ahead, Counselor.
Nothing further.
Nothing further. Question, all those in favor of third reading. Opposed, that is carried. We've got nine D, Escavator License on page 107. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Hebert?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counselor Siemens. Go ahead.
No comment.
You gotta say something. Your favorite thing.
Yeah, I know.
Anything further?
Let him dig.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, we've got nine E. This is bylaw 2660, referring to 79 and 84, or 85 First Street. This is third reading. Mr. Workney, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bylaw 2260 was a rezoning bylaw to rezone the subject properties from RLD residential low-density to RMD residential medium-density. All required documentation for this file is now complete. And recommendation is for council to give this bylaw third reading, subject to a development agreement.
Counsel, would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counselor Swagster. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, as has been noted by administration, the First Street has changed. I think when the three newest councils were first elected, I think there was only, there was only one RMD that was going up currently. And if you look at First Street now, that is that has changed. That's also a testament, though, to the transition zoning, that it does encourage development. That's a good area to see more density. It's close to the downtown corridor and with good, 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 good ability to get to downtown easily. And we are obviously needing more housing because we continue to have developers wanting to increase density downtown. So this is a good move to proceed with third reading.
Anything further?
No.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, counsel question period?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just something I want to bring up to council and just ask a general question. As council knows, Mayor Funk and I are on the the RCMP Advisory Committee, where we meet regularly with a couple of community members and our acting detachment commander, Joanne Ryle. We, obviously, traffic enforcement is important in our city. And we have, certainly in the last couple of months, have heard more reports from people noticing racing on Main Street and 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 obviously desiring more enforcement. And so at our most recent advisory meeting, we had encouraged our staff sergeant or sergeant to look at any options in terms of getting more enforcement. The reality is, is that, like many other cities across the country, we don't have our full RCMP complement. The RCMP has not, has not been able to get the full numbers that we're, that we've requested. We're often two, three, or four officers short of the amount that we have requested. And of course, that affects the ability to do proper enforcement. And so one of the, one of the proposals that Sergeant Ryle had made is that he was working together with the town of St. Anne to do some collaborative enforcement. And this has been reported in the media lately that there have been some, that there's been some joint enforcement of traffic along Main Street between both the, between our local RCMP and St. Anne. And the request was made that, from St. Anne, a proposal, that they're willing to do some additional enforcement that they would do more independently. And they would do it through funding provided by Manitoba Public Insurance. This is money that's provided to police forces to do extra traffic enforcement, often using overtime for officers. So it's not taking away from regular policing duties, but it's using extra hours. And so the request simply is, are we okay with having additional traffic enforcement in the city, continuing with the cooperation with St. Anne, and then also allowing for a certain number of hours each week with St. Anne doing some extra enforcement? And the way that I would look at it and the feedback we'd gotten from the advisory committee as a whole is that this is an important issue. Particularly when you've got the issues such as the racing on Main Street, this is something that, which is obviously very unsafe. And it's a major noise issue. And people want to see more enforcement. And I'm open to a, you know, I think we got to do whatever we can to to catch these individuals. And frankly, if you don't like the fact you're getting pulled over by St. Anne officer while you're racing down Main Street, I don't care because you shouldn't be racing down Main Street. So if your car gets impounded, I don't really care which officer it is that's impounding your car. Tough luck. But question I just want to ask is, is council okay with this proposal for for some of this, for some additional enforcement?
Yes, counsel, this is, the question's before us. Is there consensus for something like this to go on? I do want to say, this is nothing new. The only thing that's new is cooperation between two police forces. For the, for years and years, MPI has been giving money for special, special patrols. Usually, it's distracted drivers, gravel roads. They do, they do cell phones. And they do do speeding and 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 traffic violations. So this is, this is quite common. The one good thing is, is the two police forces working together in cooperation to make a safer, a safety, a more safe southeast area. And 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 so, but counsel, it looks like we've got consensus for this. You're okay? And and so then we'll, we will then, I'll have, I guess we'll have, Mr. Workney, you'll reach out to Joanne and let her know that council was okay with this?
I can do that, yes.
Yeah. And then I do want to just say, this is going to be completely random. They will, they will not be announcing which, which evenings or weekends or hours this will be. It's just going to be driver beware. At any given time, this could be happening in our community and and outside our community. So so all roads are, will be equal. Nothing will be safe. So it'll be, if you're, if you're driving erratically, you'll be ticketed. This, this morning, I was reading a story about what happened this week, this weekend. There was a, there was a person caught driving 96 kilometers, 97 kilometers per hour on Main Street in a 50, was given a $665 fine. I think that that fine is duly duly qualified for for the where they were speeding. And and if that's, if that's how they're gonna, if that's how people want to drive, that's the tickets they will be paying. Okay? So, good, then Mr. Workney will be in contact with Joanne. Okay, thank you. We'll go 11A, Correspondence Petitions. This is the Minister of Municipal and Northern Relation, the Manitoba Grow Program. Counsel, take his information. Okay? We've got nine B. This is Kidsport Manitoba, the Quarterly Newsletter. Counsel, take his information. Okay? We've got the Eastman Regional Municipal Committee, South Subcommittee of Minutes of April 7th, 2025, on 124. Counselor Siemens, is there anything you want to add to these minutes?
Uh, no.
I thank you for.
I'll speak to the, the next set of minutes that are coming out. We dealt with Doctors Manitoba, and we dealt with Iowa's minister. So that'll be on the next.
I do want to, I do want to say thank you for what you're doing on this committee. I think you're doing a good job. And and I think this will definitely be advocacy group that will definitely help our area. We've got the D, Sash Bear Walk, May 24th, fundraising walk. Counsel, take his information. And we've got the JCAP Library Minutes of April 16th, 2025, on page 129. Counselor Siemens, I noticed that the, there was a motion to raise the non-resident library fee. Would, could I get you to speak to that a little bit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to speak to that. The, at the Library Board Meeting on April 16th, the Board made the decision to raise the non-resident fees from $110 to $165 per year as of June 1st. It says in the meetings, actually, it is, has been changed to July 1st because we have a variety of different fees that are going up, will be matched on on July the 1st. So the, that that date has changed. The cost of running a library, as many things, has got up substantially, especially since COVID. And it is in May 2023 when COVID was officially over. That's only two years ago. The two largest areas of cost is wages and cost of books. Both have had substantial increases. Our wages, including this October's, upcoming October's minimum wage increase, that means our our minimum wage has increased close to 40%. And our book purchases have increased 60% plus. And right now, it is unknown what the new tariffs could potentially impact future book purchases. So there is a large concern with the amount of books that we can purchase. Recently, the Library Board made a presentation to the city council regarding the many issues facing the library. And part of the discussion was various fees, the library charges. Excuse me. And one, and council asked the Library Board if they could review their non-resident fees, which they did. Similar to other city facilities, the pool or the arena, roughly 35 to 40% of the library users are non-residents. And we need to increase those fees to the level similar to what our residents pay. It's it's simply that simple. And our residents pay through their property taxes. Non-resident fees are not only the, are not the only fees that are being increased, as many other service and room rental fees have also been adjusted. It should be noted that the frontline library staff that deal with the users, and will have to deal with the heat, will be the ones that will need to answer all the different questions. Bringing this to council's attention and then that way through the public will also help reduce the negative feedback that the staff feel that they're going to be committed to. But at this point, it is important that, in order to meet budget obligations and potentially open up the library to full hours again, we do need to raise our revenues. That wasn't tears of joy. Anyways, I just want council to be aware of that and no particular thing. But I needed, felt I needed to speak to it so that it became part of public record.
I'm just wondering if there was anything you can update on regionalization?
Excuse me. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's another committee that I've been assigned to, and that's the Regional Library Committee for Southeast Manitoba. Counselor Bill Hebert, myself, have been assigned to that. To date, eight municipalities continue to take part of those discussions. The Public Library Services Board is chairing the meetings, and much information is shared. The last regional meeting, or the last regional library that was formed in Manitoba was 2002. Only Eastman doesn't have a regional library besides a small one that is between St. Pierre and the Armada de Salisbury and St. Malo. Our next meeting is May 22nd. And it will be in-person meeting in Nerville. And it will include leadership from the Interlake and the South Central Library Boards so that we can begin discussions on what does regionalization look like? What are the costs? What are the benefits that the RMs are getting, the communities are getting? And how does it, how do you put it together? There's a lot of heavy lifting that has to happen if this is, in fact, is going to take place. The process is not a quick one. If, in fact, that we do regionalize, and this is a positive, and it does happen the earliest, absolute earliest this would be with 2027, simply there is too much to do. And it is my opinion and likely of this council and other councils, it comes down to two things.